Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrow.
Here.
Councilman Stamen.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Here.
Councilman Thayer.
Here.
Mayor Burton.
Here. Public hearing is on ordinance number 654. That's an amending title in Chapter 1 of the Clinton Municipal Code, intoxicating liquors. Do you anyone that like to speak on behalf of ordinance number 654? Here a motion to adjourn public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Public hearing adjourned. Regular meeting called to order.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrow.
Here.
Councilman Stamen.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Here.
Councilman Thayer.
Here.
Mayor Burton.
Here. Do I hear approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. This evening, the prayer be given by Councilman McBride. I'd like to take, before we start in prayer, to take a moment of silence for, if you've noticed, read the Clinton Courier, there's just a lot of people that's passed away this last week, and a lot of families have been affected by COVID and just by death overall. I'd like to pay a special moment for Gail's mama, Willa Dean Dagling. Like I said, I never got to meet her, but I know she had to be a special lady to raise somebody like you, so thought some prayers were with you.
Our Father, we thank you for this day and for your blessings. Thank you for the opportunity to serve you and also serve our community. And Father, I know that your word says, if we lack wisdom, all we have to do is ask for it and give it to us in abundance. And God, I ask right now for wisdom for this council. I ask for wisdom for this mayor and for this city staff. And God, I just pray that you would direct us in what we do and say each and every day. I pray, Father, for Gail and her family. I pray for Bill and his family during this time of loss. God, thank you for the employees and the citizens of this city, and I just pray that you would keep us all safe and that we will be obedient to you and your calling. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I put a allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bill, I'm sorry, I forgot about Maude. She was a special lady too.
Thank you.
Helped raise three of my kids. Well, I only have three kids. That's it. Didn't want to overstep there.
Here.
I know. Do you want to hear a motion to approve and review and approval of minutes of the previous meeting dated December 18th, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. At this time, we'll recognize any visitors or citizens that like to approach the council. Speak now or forever hold your peace. At this time, something we always look forward to on an annual basis is our audit for the past year. And I always tell, and I know you're one of the new guys, but I tell you, I always say the best audit we've ever heard was about 10 minutes. All right?
All right.
Don't put too much pressure.
So if I finish in eight, I gotta keep on going?
No. If you finish in eight, you can come back next year.
I better put my clock on here then. What, in front of you, you have both the audit reports, the thick report of many pages, and you have a stapled letter. I'm gonna go over the letter first. The letter basically is a governance letter, which explains, and I'm gonna pull this down so you can hear me a little bit better. The governance letter, it basically is a communication directly from the audit firm to the city council, directly to governance. It goes over required communications from an auditor to the governing body, and it starts on page one at the bottom. I think it's like the third sheet in, third or fourth sheet in. And it's highlighted areas on the left-hand side of the margin and comments on the right. Basically, besides what our responsibilities, timings, accounting policies, audit adjustments, uncorrected misstatements, I'm over on page two, consultations. Basically, in this letter, if there's something that was really urgently important for us to communicate to you, it would be in here. And really, I'll tell you that as far as this letter goes, it's just general communications. It's followed by what, on Exhibit A on page three, what significant accounting estimates are, including depreciation on capital assets or fixed assets, and then pension and OPEV, other post-employment benefits information, and what we use to determine recorded amounts and what assumptions were used. And then there's a copy of the representation letter, beginning on page four, of what's communicated, which represented to us by management. I'll skip over to the audit report now, unless there's any questions on that letter. Often, a good guide is to go by the table of contents that's in the beginning of the report, because there's a lot of different sections in here. I'm gonna skip to a few different pages. On page five is what is the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Once again, in 2019, Gail and her staff received this certificate, which is, just as it says, it's a certificate acknowledgement of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. So a job well done to have a clear, comprehensive annual financial report. That was for 2019. We're submitting again for 2020. Page eight starts the audit report, and I'll go to the top of page nine. It's actually three pages. Government reports are longer for audit reports than a commercial one would be. In the opinion section at the top of page nine, basically, in so many words, say, these financial statements are fairly presented. So you're clean opinion report. I'll skip forward to page 23, and this is the statement of net position or balance sheet on a full accrual basis, and most of governments reported on a fund basis or modified accrual basis. But if, when you add in capital assets, long-term debt, pension obligations, that's what it's gonna show, included in pages 23 and 24. Governmental activities is the city and the school board. Business-type activities, because it's a blended component unit, includes CUB and then total for primary government. But net position is a healthy amount, as is shown on page 24. On page 25 is the statement of activities. This is basically an income statement, and in a complicated format, which government is. But basically, if you go down to the first column, it goes all the way down the pages for the governmental activities, your change in net position was, were healthy amounts for governmental activities and business-type activities during the year, and healthy net positions at the end of the year as well. But with that being said, that's got a lot of long-term assets and long-term liabilities in there. Most people really care about is what's on pages. I'll skip 26, that's the balance sheet, but I'll come back to that. Page 28 is the statement of revenues, expenses, and expenditures and changes in fund balance for governmental funds. So the first column is the general fund, the second column is the general purpose school fund, third column are other funds, basically. The third to last line on these pages show net change in fund balances, about $50,000 positive for a general fund, a healthy amount, over $800,000 for the schools, but that includes bond proceeds amounts in there, so that will flush out next year. But still, your ending fund balances for the general fund are $7.8 million, very bottom of that first column, and $5.2 million for the general purpose school funds, compared to your revenue, total revenue, excuse me, it's good to compare what your fund balance is, the unappropriated fund balance. So I'll go back to page 26 for a second. The unassigned fund balance for the general fund is the last number for that 7.8 number. It's the 4.5 million, near the third to last number on that page. And for the general purpose school fund, it's the 5.148 number, assigned to education, which is also the last number before the final subtotal. So 4.5 million for the city, 5 million for the schools, compared to your expenses of 13, over 13 million, a little under 14 million, and for the general purpose school funds of 9.6 million. In other words, you have several months' reserve, so you're in healthy financial position. It's, you like to compare what your unassigned fund balance is compared to what your total expenditures or total budget expenses that you anticipate for the year. So both amounts are healthy amounts several months. After that, detailed general fund starts on page 30, and detail revenues and expenses for the general purpose school funds on page 31. Balance sheets and income statements for CUB start on page 32. And then shortly after that, you'll have your footnotes, which provide descriptive information and details regarding a lot of balance sheet and income statement accounts, including several pages on the pensions. They're required. Sorry, it's very long reading, but they are required. And then after that, you have some required supplemental information, which gives us information on your pensions. Your pensions are in pretty good shape right now. Of course, the market's been good the last couple of years through June 30th of 2020, bounced back by then. So pensions in good position. As far as, well, and, you know, a lot of other information in the footnotes as well, but nothing that I would say that needs to be pointed out as anything that would be alarming. After that, at the very end, there's, well, there's several supplemental pages, but you come to the compliance section, which is the last few pages of the report, starts on page 172. There are no compliance findings this year, so a clean audit from a compliance standpoint as well, so no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies that would need to be reported. We tested one program in the schools, the child nutrition cluster, and that testing was clean also. So a positive report from the standpoint, there are no findings either from a compliance standpoint, or from a grant standpoint, or from a, you know, financial control standpoint. And the financial position, both for the cities and, both for the city and for the schools, was positive at the end of the year.
Nine minutes.
Nine minutes?
So any questions? Your clock's off, so. Any questions?
I have one.
Yes.
Is there anything at all, as a council member, that you, your firm, observed or saw that needs any attention, or something that we need to work on between this time now and next year? I mean, I've been on here, I think since 2008, and there's been some not-so-good reports.
Yes.
And I get the gist, I think we're great, I mean, doing a good job, got a fund balance, et cetera, but is there anything that we need to, in your opinion?
Right now, things are good. Fund balances are good. I always like to monitor the pension and, you know.
And that's been a subject in your past.
Correct. And we'll be, hopefully, markets hold up, but as longer as COVID goes on, you know, who knows? So, because that will impact, you know, what your net pension asset or liability would be.
Okay.
So, so good for right now.
Okay.
What's your recommendation on reserves? You know, you mentioned that we have good reserves, several months' reserves. A city of our size, you have?
Typically, you would see between three and six months of annual expenditures.
Okay.
And you're in that range. Probably on the, I didn't calculate the actual percentage, but probably on the higher end of that range. But there are a lot of cities around that, you know, were not in as good a position, and then you have something like happen this past year that we're still dealing with, and they're struggling, so.
Any other questions? Thank you. See you next year.
All right, thank you. With a minute to spare.
Hey, Bill, did I have any appointments? Performance scores?
I didn't want to, sorry, one last, finance department here, Gail and others do a very good job, so they make it as easy as possible for us to audit. Now, we don't always make it easy on them, but just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
In other news, the sky is blue.
Great, great comments. Sorry, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Communication from the mayor, I don't have, I don't think I have anything to bring up. I will say, I kind of follow the COVID stuff on a daily basis, and I'll say that even though nationally, we might not be in, we might not be doing as well as we should be or could be, the state, and especially Anderson County's doing really well. The last few weeks, we've gone down, our numbers now are before, numbers around be like they were before Thanksgiving. So we're averaging about 30, 35 positives a day, and we've gone down, you know, during Thanksgiving and Christmas, they were over 110, 120 a day. So that's very positive. Our total positive cases, like, I think it's like 470, where at one time, they were up well over 1,000. So hang in there, guys. I think we're doing a lot of good things. We could always do better, and, but there's help around the corner, and I think vaccines is gonna provide that help. But I think sometimes you watch national news, regardless of the station, it's gloom and doom and scary to death, and I might be in some cases, but I think in this area, we're doing much, much better.
Can I make a comment on the vaccine?
Sure, please.
Okay, because a lot of folks are calling the pharmacy, and I know they're calling other folks as well. Let me tell you what I know about the vaccine. Number one, local pharmacies, Clinton Drugstore, Apple, Hoskins, anybody else, we will not be able to get, we will not be getting the vaccine until Phase Two. When does Phase Two begin? After Phase One. That's all we know, seriously. I mean, we don't know, there's some reports saying first quarter, in the first quarter, beginning of second quarter, we do not know. And my store and drugstore wide, I talked to other pharmacists, we're doing what we can to be ready to go when they release them. But right now, the only place to get them in this area, if your physician doesn't have them and doesn't call you, and go to like one of the UTs, or the Tenovas, or the Covenant's, or one of those facilities, the only place is the Health Department. You can go to tn.gov, and there's a link on there, talks about immunization, and then you can go and, it pulls up a picture of the state and type in Anderson County, but you can actually sign up for the vaccine on the website. You'll have some questions to answer, and if you qualify, they'll put you in line. But like, let's say they're doing 75 and over, for instance, I don't know, I think that's what it is. It changes so much, I'm afraid to say anything, really, afraid I'll be quoted or misconstrued. But let's say it says 75, and you're 73, and you go ahead and sign up, your information's kicked out. When it does come 65, you'll have to reapply. So don't, if you do not meet the criteria, don't fudge and think you do, and you're gonna jump ahead of everybody else, because I've been told directly from the Health Department, you'll be kicked out. But anyway, they'll put you in line, and then they'll contact you back. But some states, I know West Virginia's done really good getting it out, but they even involved local pharmacies. And of course, I'm a pharmacist, own a drugstore, I'm gonna town us, but it's not just us, but Anderson County Health Department can only give so many shots. If every drugstore, there's 20,000 independently owned drugstores in America, if every drugstore community, and that ain't the Publix's, that's not the Walgreens, and every, it's just the community-owned stores, if we only gave 50 shots a day, which is reasonable, think of the impact that would make in a week's time. Now, why don't they give them to us? Maybe they don't have them. I don't know. But right now, the only place to get them is the Health Department, and go through that criteria. But our website has a link, I'm not promoting our website in particular, but you can go to tn.gov, look around on there for COVID, and go to the website, sign up. But somebody told me the other day, I hadn't seen this, a customer told me, there's like 3,400 people in line, so who knows?
I just pulled up today's data, January 25th.
We were about 13%.
We're down to 11.7.
And the goal is 10 or under?
Yeah. And we have, we had 18 new cases today, and we have 450 active cases, which is the lowest, again, it's been in almost two months.
And Blount County's in the 30 percentage, and we have been up in the 20s and mid to low 20s, so we're trending in the right direction.
But when it comes to getting to the pharmacy, I agree with you, it's gonna be a game changer.
Yeah.
Because there's gonna be more outlets where you go. Okay, we talked enough about that, but thanks for your input, certainly appreciate it. Under committee reports, city school board report, Ms. Johnson.
Good evening. Some Clinton City updates for you. This is a time of year where I have to humbly come to you, and it pains me just a little bit because I'm gonna have to say something nice about Scott Ray, and you know how much that, that hurt, that is just painful for me to do. But we got out of the car, and he was like so excited, and I didn't know why he was in such a good mood, because that's a rare occasion. And then I realized that it was odd at night, and so he was, he just couldn't wait for Gail to hand him, hand him that big book. But with all due respect, Scott does a great job with our school finances. We give him a hard time that he uses both sides of his Post-it notes, and yes, that is a true story. We give him a hard time that when he goes to a hotel room, he does take all the pens, the pads, and yes, even the toilet paper. And so, but we give him a hard time about these things, but it pays off when it comes to school finances, because we are definitely in good financial standing, and he has done a great job keeping us on track. So thank you, thank you, Scott, for your quirky personality. It pays dividends to us. So a few updates. I agree with Scott Burton that we are, Mayor Burton, that we are doing much better on a school front as far as COVID goes. I've been doing weekly phone calls to parents every Monday night. That didn't happen yet, but it will happen before I leave Clinton in just a few minutes. And so we'll give that update, that we've had zero teacher positives since we came back from Christmas. And so that is, in my opinion, simply amazing. And we have had this past week, just two student positives at Clinton Elementary, none at Clinton, South Clinton, and none at North Clinton. So we are definitely seeing positives decrease at a wonderfully rapid rate. We are probably turning into the Health Department, probably between 15 to 20 household or close contact reports a week. So we're still being impacted to a fairly large degree with just close contacts and household contacts. But the good news is, is the parents are letting us know that upfront. They're being upfront and honest about exposure so that we can keep the kids out of the schools before possible contagious activity happens. And so truly, the success that we have had has definitely been attributed to the collective efforts of the parents to be honest with us and keep sick kids at home. So we finished up our 95th instructional day today, and, you know, when we went into December, I really held some conversations with central office that we were really gearing up that we might have to go virtual for a period, a period of time, but we have actually fair January a lot better than I had anticipated, and I have significant hopes that we'll be able to make it through the school year without shutting down schools and going virtual. So that is good news. On not-so-good news, they did hold a special education call session last week. Spent the majority of my week talking to legislators and trying to advocate for some of the education bills that were passed through very, very quickly on a very transparent front. The way that this happened is, is that none of the educators, nor TOS, our Tennessee Organization of School Superintendent's, who is our advocating agency, none of them were, none of us were able to see the bills before the public saw them. Unfortunately, no input was gathered from educators or stakeholders regarding these bills, and then general sessions, we were not allowed into the buildings to advocate in any capacity, and no directors, educators, parents, stakeholders, nor TOS was able to testify as decisions were being made on these bills. So it became very clear to us that these were just bills that were kind of rubber-stamped and were gonna be passed through, and that's exactly what we saw happen. Not all of them are terrible. Some of them, we will benefit from. They did approve a 2%, they're calling it a raise, not really a raise because it's one-time money, and so it will be a bonus, but they did approve a 2% bonus retroactive to January, which means when you look at a teacher's contract, that's really gonna be a 1% raise. But if we know what we know about BEP, BEP funds 70% of our positions. And so 30% of our positions are funded through your all's maintenance of effort and through tax money. So the money will not come to the state for those 30% of positions. They also only are gonna send enough money to cover our certified positions. So nurses will not be covered in that, teaching assistants won't be covered in that, secretaries won't be covered in that, custodians won't be covered in that. And they all, it is taking a collective effort of us all to keep school buildings open. So certainly, Clinton City is not going to reward one set of individuals over another set. So when that money comes in, given the fact that it's not gonna cover everyone, and only 70% of our teaching staff, it's not gonna equate to exactly what I was hoping they would do to reward our teachers for the wonderful, and staff members for the wonderful job that they do. So thankful that it's something. Something is better than nothing. But I think, given the fact that they have preached so hard about the importance of schools being open, and me personally philosophically believing that schools need to be open, and seeing the dedication and hard work and blood, sweat, and tears that our staff has done, I would have liked to have seen the state recognize them a little bit more. The other big one that they did pass was a hold harmless, which means that we will give T and ready this year, which we advocated to do, because I want to see where our students stand. It is going to be uglier than it has in years past. Teachers are working diligently, but we have had between 40 and 50% of our students be quarantined at some point during this school year, so kids have just missed significantly more school than they have. And while we have offered a distance learning and a virtual option, we know that that is not as quality as what they get in the classroom with a teacher. So we will give T and ready, as long as we test 80% of our kids, which I do not worry about in Clinton City schools. Some districts are very worried about meeting that 80% testing threshold. I'm not worried about that for us. We will not receive, teachers will not be held accountable, schools will not be held accountable, and districts will not be held accountable. So, but we will receive the reports to where we can look at how we have done and what areas we need to build upon. The other good piece that came out was some parts of the learning loss bill were positive. There's gonna be some funding for us to offer some summer school options. In fact, they're mandating that we offer a summer school to certain grade levels over the summer, and they are gonna give us, what they're saying, they're gonna fully fund it, that's not really true. They're giving us $1,400 per classroom per week. It will be a $1,000 stop and for teachers, and then they're saying we can use that other $400 for discretionary for a principal or for instructional supplies, but when you pay a teacher $1,000, then you still have our portion of Social Security, TCRS, and Medicare and all that that goes on top of that. So we will, we will have to use some of our COVID funds and some of our GP funds to help cover the cost of that. But they have outlined some summer schools, some bridge programs, some after-school tutoring programs that will be funded through TANF and LEAP's grant to help us offset the learning loss that has happened. Probably one of the most controversial pieces of this that kind of got added at the last minute with no input from us is the third-grade retention law. And so what they are saying with this is by the year 2022, 23, any student, there are four categories to T and ready. So you've got your below basic, you've got your approaching, you have your on-track, and you have your mastered. And those four levels have nothing to do with reading on grade level. They just have to do with where we, as a state, have decided to set our cut scores. So each state does that differently. So they're defining, each state defines what approaching and on-track looks like differently, and we have set our cut scores very ambitiously, which we should. But they are saying that any third grader that is below basic or in the approaching area would be subject to retention unless they go through a six-week, six-hour-a-day summer program with a 90% participation rate, or they agree to do tutoring all through fourth grade, an hour after school, four days a week for the entire year at a 90% participation rate. So I don't think any of us would argue, if you're below basic, then, you know, let's talk. We've got some, we've got some problems, and we need to do some intense intervention. But the concern lies, and the approaching category is so wide, that ranges from students who are reading on a 23rd percentile to a 62nd percentile. So if this law stays as written, we will be having retention conversations with 62% of our third-grade students across the state of Tennessee, some of which in the upper approaching category are on track through correlations to score a 21 and 22 on their ACT. So it clearly, we have some So it, it, it clearly, we have some major, major concerns. Um, we have, we have talked until we're blue in the face about our concerns with this because there's very limited research that shows retention is an effective intervention. Um, what we are being told is that that would be a last resort because the parents can opt into a six-week summer school or a year-long tutoring. But as we know, that's not an op, option for some of our parents who have custody issues and have to go to another state and be with a, you know, one of, one of their parents or, you know, trick. There's just a whole plethora of issues, um, behind that. So the good news is that does not go into effect for two years, and so we have two years to kind of work on that piece of legislation and advocate for what we feel like is, um, is, is best for, for our city kids. So, um, you know that I'm opinionated enough to where I have not made many friends in the Department of Education or in legislation in the past week. But we will continue to advocate towards that. So that's kind of what occurred.
Is there anything we can do as a council? You know, is there a, what do you mean, a resolution or something that we can do or a letter we can send to try to help or get the city staff, Roger, and his folks involved and?
I think anything that we could do at this point would be welcomed, um, because right now it is falling upon deaf ears. Um, I'll, I'll just be real frank with you, and I think that, I think a lot of the legislators in, in, with all due respect, don't understand all the aspects of education they, and and what they're, what they're touting is that literacy is at an all-time low. Well, it's not an, Tennessee is not, the sky's not falling in Tennessee. They're using pieces of data to make it look bad. But we are not, we are not, we are farther along in Tennessee than we ever have been, but our quick cut scores are so incredibly high that it's really, really hard to meet that benchmark. Um, and so their response to me is, well, why wouldn't a parent want their kids to have additional learning? And, you know, we're giving them this pathway and this pathway before we mandate retention. So what they did do is they went in and put an amendment that said that you could make an appeals process. But as of right now, that appeals process would not be with the teacher who knows the kid best, or the principal who knows the kid best, or even with central office in Clinton City, we know our kids. It would have to be an appeal to the state where they would be looking at the child on a paper pencil, one T and ready test, given as an eight- and nine-year-old to determine the trajectory of what's gonna happen to them. And so that, in my opinion, the amendment does not fix the issue, and I have let that be known as well.
You, you kind of threw me off when you were giving your, your full report at the end, that you have, just have a two-year window for, I guess, implementation of this.
Correct.
I guess I thought, though, that this was, all came about with COVID.
Correct.
So you.
Has nothing to do with COVID.
So it has nothing to do, it just happens, same, it just happens same time.
It, the learning camps, yes, those will go into effect this summer, but then they threw in that retention piece, and that's what we argued. This really doesn't have anything to do with the COVID situation. This doesn't have anything, why are we pushing this through an emergency? You know, special call session when this has such great ramifications. This itself could be a separate bill. Take it out and let's talk about it in general session and let's have some collaboration and let's make this better, and it fell upon deaf ears.
Kelly, I'm hearing this third grade retention gateway program, and it sounds very ambitious and everything, and it also sounds very costly. Are we getting any indication the state's gonna fund this or is this gonna be on our backs?
They are saying at this point the summer camps will be funded, um, at fourteen hundred dollars a classroom per week. And then they will mandate that we pay, and the teachers deserve every bit of it, but, but a thousand dollars of stop and will go to the teacher. The largest concern is at this point, our teachers, with all due respect, have been pouring their heart and soul into keeping schools open this summer, and they are tired. They are tired and, and trying to, um, get them to commit to another six weeks in the summer when usually they use that time to, to recoup, and a lot of them have children and don't have healthcare and can't work during the summer. Um, staffing it, I'm not gonna lie, is probably going to be an issue.
Across the state. It'll be an issue everywhere.
Yeah, your wife's a teacher, you know. So not a, not a grim picture. I think the frustrating thing is just the, the input there was not considered nor allowed.
I think, I think the, you know, I think some of our leaders in the state are very strong, but there's some that, you know, I, I talked to Roger before, you know, if you're a state representative or state senator, if I was in that position, or if any of us, I mean, I'd call city managers. You only have four or five probably, maybe even less than that, you know. Depends on if you're representing, if you have three city managers to talk to, you have four school systems to talk to. Pick up the phone, pick up the phone.
Pick up the phone and ask, yeah.
Listen to what, you know, you're, the experts are saying, are telling you, then, not to say that you might, you know, change your, your thought process, but at least you'd gain more information on the issue.
I think what it will take with regards to the retention is, I think a lot of times they think that directors are kind of self-advocating for what's gonna be best for them. I think in this particular situation, it's gonna have to be an abundance of parents who can express that appreciation and enough parents doing it to know that they have control over possibly next elections. And I'm not speaking just within this place. I'm speaking across, across the state of Tennessee because when we advocate, we are one vote, and a lot of the legislators know that we don't ultimately control what happens at the polls. But if enough parents see the impact of this and we have parental groups and other stakeholders joining in as well, hopefully we'll be able to make some headway.
Who could they call to say, yeah, that's a good idea? Who would say, yeah, that's a great idea? Nobody.
No one has.
Well, but I mean, they never even come to our meetings or anything. I mean, they never, I know they're in session at different times, but I, I'd just like to make a comment that whatever we can do as a council, I'd, I'd like for this council, if you all want to join me in some way, I don't know how, but get with, you get with city staff and Roger and
The resolution.
And come up with some things. And I mean, we want to help you. I mean, we, we're part of the schools when it's good, and we're part of the schools when it's not good, and legislation, and so we just need to help you with that, but whatever.
No one disagrees that we want to improve literacy. I mean, there's not gonna be anybody out there that says we can do, we can do better. We can always do better. But I think the method and how we get there, it's too difficult of work and too meaningful of work to put it down on paper and pass, pass it in a three-day session without any collaboration whatsoever from the people who are implementing.
Any consultation from the folks. That's, that's the part I guess that really hacks me off.
Yep.
Because from, you know, healthcare, I see that done before too. And, you know, if you're a farmer in West Tennessee and you're serving your area, you cannot be a expert in farming and an expert in healthcare and an expert in education and an expert in everything. So, but I think sometimes they think they are.
Well, and they're, they're wanting to, and it's true. If you don't read by third grade, your projection is not great for graduating high school for incarceration. All of those things are very, very true, but the research behind retention is equally as disturbing.
Are the other sta, any other states that are doing this?
No.
You know what?
Not that I'm aware, no.
We're leading the way.
No, but yes, yes.
Any other questions for Kelly?
Sorry to take up so much of your time, but you probably will hear that, so I wanted you to kind of know what was, and Larry, you've done a great, very good job of keeping your opinions to yourself tonight. I know we're on the same page.
Scotty, you have anything?
I have another amendment for you.
All right.
I'll be brief. Although it's probably the most significant budget amendment that I've ever brought before you. So, my memo to the Board of Education was two pages. I'm gonna hit the highlights for you in general purpose school fund. Big picture, uh, real high helicopter level. Uh, we have an increase in expenditures, uh, for salaries of a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Uh, and that is to pay a one-time bonus. If you'll remember, we did not increase the salary schedule for two thousand, twenty, twenty-one fiscal year. So, um, Board of Ed, and we have them approved of a one-time bonus. And that is actually funded by, uh, an extra position and a half that we lay into the budget. Uh, kind of just in case our enrollment moves and we have to add a teacher, which didn't happen this year. So we have the money for those bonuses within the budget. And then we finish the addition. Uh, so our twenty-twenty-one expenditures are seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And, um, if you remember, our anticipated completion was six-thirty of twenty, and due to some delays, that got pushed into uh, completion of August. So that's why we have the budget amendment. Are there any questions on the general purpose school fund?
Have any questions for Scott?
The, uh, next page in the memo is, uh, the federal projects, and there's several. I'm gonna go over just the new federal projects, uh, funds that we've gotten this year. CARES Act, a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Um, people are gonna call it S R one-point-O. And, uh, remote technology grant, uh, almost thirty thousand dollars. That's for one-to-one devices. Uh, reopening grant, uh, for forty thousand dollars. We've used that for the sound enhancement systems in our classrooms. Um, and an internet connectivity grant for forty-five hundred dollars is used for several, uh, mobile, high-speed internet devices. That's the kind of meat and potatoes of the budget amendment. There's no recommended budget amendment for cafeteria fund at this time.
But you want approval for budget amendment number two?
Yes, sir.
Here in motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
Yes.
Councilman Harold?
Yes.
Councilman Stain?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Thayer?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes. Budget number two passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Clinton Regional Planning Commission Report. Councilman Gann?
The Board of zoning appeals and the planning commission both met on January the eleventh, twenty-twenty-one. The Board of zoning appeals, applicant hologamble cremation service requesting administrator review for property located at six-twenty-one South Charles Seavers Boulevard. This was deferred business. There were a couple of questions that we had for John about this, and he came and, uh, answered those for us, and that, that was approved. Uh, and then under new business, applicant Edward Valerini requesting rear setback variance to fifteen feet for property located at two-thirty Harper Drive. Uh, this puts him, puts him still off the TVA line and is still out of the floodplain. So, uh, we did, we did grant that also. Then the Clinton Regional Planning Commission, uh, applicant SRI operating company requesting site plan review for property located at North Charles Seavers Boulevard. Property is owned B four. That was approved. This is, uh, for a brand-new Sonic, uh, which will have drive-in capabilities and drive-through capabilities. In fact, uh, perhaps two-lane drive-through capabilities, which will be up near the, uh, the Buddy's Barbecue area.
It's where the old gas station was, right?
Yeah. So, uh, we did approve that, so we can look forward to that coming about fairly soon. Uh, applicant Aspire Foundation requesting site plan review for property located at Carden Farm, at Carden Road. Property is owned P one, and, uh, that was approved. And in addition to that, Aspire Foundation requesting rezoning from V two to P one for the property located at Clinch Avenue. You have a map in your packet about this. This is the old Summers Monument property, which was at that time zone B two. So, uh, after its inclusion into the Aspire Foundation, uh, they're requesting it be included in the P one designation. And then also, uh, afterwards, uh, concluding the meeting discussion about, uh, opiate treatment clinics, which has resulted in a recommendation on ordinance six-fifty-five, which we'll take up later.
Any question? Any questions for Councilman Gann?
Yes, out at the, uh, Valerina, I guess where she's building the houses, on the road, I guess the city was gonna maintain that road or redo it. Where are we, I guess, with that?
Right now with COVID, all that's been put on hold. We've done some of the survey work. The kind of the next step was we'll have to have a public meeting with all the landowners. And right now, all of that's, like I said, due to the COVID nineteen, we've put that on hold, but it's still
I understand.
Still being planned.
That building here?
Yes.
Across from Mary Point, across the water. They, what, they talked about when?
They plan on breaking ground with the Sonic?
The indication we got was fair zone.
Good.
I don't know if this is the place to ask the question or not, but I'll ask it, and if it's not, I can ask it again later. Traffic with, is it the Dollar Tree that's going in up there at Tanner Lane and all that? And I've had two, three folks say something to me about coming out of Tanner Lane, coming down on the Hillvale, traffic backed up, red light. What's, what, is this a good time to ask that?
Yeah, yeah.
What, what's the status on that? What can be done? I mean, that, that area is busy and coming over Hillvale there.
We actually hired Cannon and Cannon just last week.
Oh, really?
Traffic engineers to look at the whole situation of the interstate, uh, traffic signal at, uh, Seavers Boulevard at Doe Run, which is the new intersection there at, uh, well,
Arby's.
Doe Run's old, but the Buddy's Barbecue intersection, Tanner Lane, uh,
Okay.
Traffic, possible traffic signal there. But we've also asked them to look at just the whole traffic pattern up there with some recommendations. Uh, you know, they've come back with some preliminary recommendations of possibly six-laning that road from Doe Run to the interstate. Uh, possibly putting, uh, a back road and extending sinking springs all the way over to Buffalo, given a state road that would relieve some of the traffic. So that was just some preliminary stuff, but we have asked them to look at that whole area up there, especially the traffic signals.
Traffic signals, would that be the city's responsibility or is that state, state's responsibility? Do you have to get the state involved with that?
We've got the state involved. The preliminary, uh, uh, originally over the years, we've had them look at Doe Run, and they've not given us permission to put one there. They have given us preliminary permission that we could go ahead and put one, but no, financially, it will be our responsibility. I will let council know I have been in contact with the county mayor about some possible assistance from the county on it.
On, on that whole?
Well, yeah, you have county roads coming into city roads, so it's, it's intersection.
I was talking about the Tanner Lane issue. That'll help Hillvale as much as anything.
Correct.
Well, all of it, I guess. Well, Doe Run is county union.
County too, yes.
Okay. So that's good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Roger, can you remind me how much, uh, a set of red lights going for now?
Rough estimate we got to do both intersections and they'll both be about the same, even though one's smaller than the other. The biggest expense is the control panels with them. Probably will be between three hundred and three-twenty. Is that right? To do both of them.
Give or take.
That's three hundred thousand?
Yes. So about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty for each one.
You just about donate your council tape. Three miles.
Thanks for. There is, uh, we did get, two weeks ago, uh, email, I think the mayor got it too, that through the CARES Act money, T-DOT got two-hundred-and-eleven million dollars that could only be spent on projects like this, T-DOT. So our thought is, once we get the design, we'll probably ask for some of that money through the TPO to help fund some of the, you know, that re-improvements there.
Now, going to the six-lane, that'd be T-DOT, wouldn't it? That wouldn't, that'd be, that wouldn't.
Well, that'd be T-DOT, yeah, but it'd be kind of like the, the grant we're doing downtown.
Right.
Any other questions?
I may just add on, on an alternate term, I met with, uh, our new director, Green McAdoo, and was very impressed with him, as Roger told us about last week. Uh, many of you may have been aware, the MLK breakfast was postponed, uh, due to COVID issues. He's looking at several other options, but he is, uh, uh, very invigorated and, and driven to make Green McAdoo the best that it can possibly be. So I was, he is, uh, one of the things he's doing is meeting individually with every single board member to try to find out what, what their goals are and how it connects with his goals and and what we can do to make Green McAdoo what it should be across the country.
Great.
And I meant to have him here tonight. I'll bring him next meeting, introduce him.
Is he in permanent housing now?
He's got a. Permanent renting, yes.
And he was very amazed at how, how, uh, cost-effective that was compared to where he came from.
Oh, I can imagine. Can imagine. Thanks, Larry. Um, Clinton Utilities Board Report. Councilman Thayer?
So, um, C U V's, um, meeting this month was postponed due to some coronavirus issues, and we will be meeting this Thursday. In light of that, though, I do have one, um, update. A vehicle Friday afternoon, um, on the way outside of Oak Ridge, near the UT Arboretum, hit a TVA tower and knocked a leg out of the tower, the, and it knocked, um, power out to three of our substations, and I, my understanding is it left Oak Ridge in the dark for a while. Um, those of you that are familiar with FLIZER, this, we have a technique and a, and an operation at C U V that three of our substations were back online very shortly, and then they had to, um, carefully bring, I think, the other area. I think River, Oliver Springs, and Coalfield were all, uh, affected, but we were online much quicker than Oak Ridge by several hours, if not a day. So, I mean, hats off to the, to the folks at C U V and the electric side. And then I will update, um, this month, board meeting next month.
Yeah, I was, um, I was at home when that happened, as it turned out, and the, and the power went out twice, both for thirty seconds, and then, then it came back on. out twice, both for thirty seconds, and then they came back on, they went back down, came back on, so very impressive.
It affected us at Harden Valley.
Do what?
It affected us at Harden Valley.
How fast did you all get back online?
Just one to two minutes, and then our power came back, but our internet was down.
Good.
They could hit Jamaro that area, too.
Thanks. Thanks, Scott.
You're up.
Do you have any more under other committees?
That's all my committees.
General Government Report, Mr. Howe?
Thank you, Mayor. In accordance with the previous approved practices of the council, I respectfully request authorization to file for various grant funds through the state and federal government and other agencies as appropriate, as we become aware of available funding. This would include, but not limited to, funds for building renovations, water and sewer improvements, drainage improvements, infrastructure, and funding for additional employees and personnel. Poison equipment, I'm sorry.
Hear motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. Finance, I defer to Gail.
Property taxes, we have collected over two point two million, which is a little over fifty percent of our tax aggregates, and we've done very well on our collections this year. Our revenues in general are looking very good. Our state shared and our local option, which, remember, we lag a month, so that would be like forty-two percent annualized. We are at fifty-three percent of our budget for local option sales tax, sixty percent for state sales tax. So, you know, we lowered our budget estimates in anticipation of the effect of COVID, and we have come in really good on those. Particularly when you look at our expenditures, our expenditures, we also, of course, cut some things, and we are maintaining within that budgeted annualized percentage, so we're looking really good on those. One of them, too, our hotel motel tax, we are at fifty percent of our budget, which, of course, we did lower that, but still, that's, that was one of our revenues that was hit pretty hard with all this, so so we're looking good on that. I want to mention in regards to the audit, he mentioned our pension. Of course, the state of Tennessee's pension system is one of the best in the nation. We actually have a three point two million dollar pension asset. We don't have a pension liability in our governmental funds. We have an asset. And part of that, of course, is the state and how they manage the funds, but also the city, for several years, has put in above our recommended rate. We were putting in at eleven and quarter percent when our rate was at eight percent, so that has helped us to increase that that pension asset. And even this year, we're putting in at nine percent, but our recommended rate is, I think it's like eight point something. So that's highly unusual. I know you all have read of other states that have a lot of pension difficulties. We do not have that. We are in very, very good. Sales tax, I mentioned to you last month. I've done some research, but this month, the city was up eleven percent. The county overall, in total, was down nineteen percent. But that was made up mainly of a thirty-one percent decrease in Oak Ridge, and it's my understanding, I haven't got the specific details, but it appears that they had to refund something, so they've had some kind of adjustment. But I did talk to the state of Tennessee and got an answer. I'm not sure I like the answer or agree with the answer, but according to them, if you are outside the state of Tennessee and you make sales in Tennessee, then it goes based on destination. And supposedly, those vendors report where it's being shipped to, to the state of Tennessee, and the state of Tennessee decides where that sales tax goes, whether it's in the city, county. I find that a little hard to believe, that a vendor would report an address, but that's what I'm told, so.
Well, that all the more fuels the fact that we talked a couple of months ago, and here last month, about trying to get a zip code for the city. So what has been done in regards to that since November?
We've briefly talked to the postmaster general, have not, with the holidays and everything, have not got back with her yet.
Can you make that a priority? Because that's gonna be a long process, at best, I would imagine. But with that, that would probably help, though, based on that, because you're saying they get specific to street address, apparently, right?
Yes, that's the way it's supposed to work.
Right.
What I would, what I would have anticipated is that the vendor would have to determine whether it was city, county, whatever. But what the state's telling me is, now, and the state does have GPS on their system. And if you remember, a few years ago, Big Lots dropped off of our sales tax report, and when I contacted the state, it was because in their GPS system, the GPS system had determined it was not in the city limits, based on an address. So their system does have GPS capability, but for a vendor to report every sale and where that went does not make sense to me.
Big massive amounts of data.
Exactly. Now, there are out-of-state vendors that are registered with the state of Tennessee, and if you're if you're a registered entity, they would, that would be treated differently. But that's all I got from them.
You would you would think the state would have some type of program when that's delivered from the vendor to make that determination where it goes?
I think what you find, though, is, I've worked in reporting sales to other states, for instance, Alabama, and it was the responsibility of the seller to determine, and for instance, in Alabama, you could have six different states, or that county or city could have five, they're all different. And so, but still, it was reliant on the seller to determine who got that money.
Not the state.
Not the state. That's a lot of work.
They must have a special session and then take anybody's opinion, just like they did with the schools. Just send us the money, and we'll take care of it. Thank you.
Yes. So I'm still working on it, still got some contacts out there.
But over the last couple of months, we've come out, maybe they hurt our squeaky wheel and shed a little bit more out this direction this month.
Well, and actually, Ruling County was down this month, too, so.
It was?
Anderson County, outside the cities, was down about seventeen percent. So that's, there's no rhyme or reason to.
That's no, it'd be interesting to see what next month is.
Yes, because this was November sales, next month will be December sales.
Christmas sales, interesting.
So we'll.
But didn't we talk about the zip code, that that was gonna be hard to do?
Yes. We've, several years ago, tried also, not only due to this, but due to the crime rate. A lot of times, the city's crime rate's based on the three seven seven one six. It takes into effect, you know, almost Oliver Springs, halfway to Lake City, Claxton, so several reasons, it'd be nice to have our own.
No, let's give it a try.
Give it a try.
Oh, you said.
I would try to get it, yeah, yeah.
I agree. I agree. Any questions for Gail? So everything's looking good, Gail? I noticed your, I guess, a lot of the revenue coming in, that's just still kind of early. I mean, we just didn't, haven't got a lot of property tax yet, and expenses were up a little bit. That might have been just payment on debt or or something, I don't.
Some of ours is is timing. We do a lot of payouts at the beginning of the year for our insurance and certain things, so we see that, and then we'll see it kind of flatten out a little bit.
Okay.
Thank you, Gail, for such a clean report.
Yes. I bet you made straight A's, didn't you?
What my wife said.
You used to be the type of person I wouldn't sit next to. Did I say that? Was that funny? My filter's gone. Turning fifty-five, I'm just.
Your own record.
I'm great, I know.
Good. Only other thing I have, Mayor, just FYI, I know I've had several phone calls, and I think you have too, concerning the new intersection at Yarnell Road and the Aspire Park Drive. We've had our traffic engineers go out last week and look at it. They've made us some recommendations, and we're actually gonna meet with the Aspire Park representatives in the morning to hopefully make some corrections to that, make it more user-friendly. That's just FYI, if anybody else gets calls.
I've already got those, too.
Yeah, I think we all have.
That's all I have.
Any questions for Roger?
Yeah, Mr. Howe, if you got any update, or would you have any notice of the grant that we filled out for the swimming pool, or recreation grant, call it? Is there any signals they give out when they're gonna give it out, or?
I don't even know if they give a schedule yet, have they?
I haven't seen.
We haven't seen anything yet.
No smoke signals yet.
Any other questions? Thanks, Roger. When I go through ordinances and resolutions, I just want to look to you to give further explanation on that, and you can pass the ball to whoever you wish. Under ordinances and resolutions, first reading of new ordinances, the first is ordinance number six fifty-five, amending Title fourteen zoning ordinance relative to drug treatment centers and pain management clinics.
This is pretty much what Coach Gann spoke about earlier. It just pretty much puts the treatment centers in line, as we did with the pain clinics, as I guess we passed that ordinance four or five years ago. It just combines the ordinance, and it allows treatment centers M one and M two, same as pain clinics.
Hear motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I did want to say, and again, I think I speak for the council, I don't think anybody here is is against this. I just don't think, personally, I just don't think it needs to be in in the thoroughfare of interest to to one of our city's entrances, in being in a center that's been kind of downtrodden over the last few years, to really, I I think with Aspire coming in, it's really gonna give that area a boost, and I I think it would have more success if it stayed retail in that area, so. Everybody agree with her?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
Yes.
Councilman Harold?
Yes.
Councilman Staley?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Thayer?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes, ordinance number six fifty-five passes on first and second reading, first and second reading. Ordinance number six fifty-six, rezoning B two to P one. This is the Clinch Avenue at Yarnell Road. Hear motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'm sorry, Roger, I kind of skipped you on that. That's where the Old Summers Monument building is.
Monument property, yes.
Where are they supposed, when are they supposed to be taking that down? You know?
We're still talking to the Norfolk Southern about closing the farm crossing on the end of that piece of property, and once we get that, they want us to lease property and some other things. Once we get all that nailed down, then we'll start demolition. We already have it turned, though.
Yeah, okay, all right. Any any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
Yes.
Councilman Harold?
Yes.
Councilman Staley?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Thayer?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes, ordinance number six fifty-six passes on first reading. Ordinance number six fifty-seven, amending Title fourteen zoning ordinance, chapter fourteen, which is the stormwater management regulations.
This pretty well brings our stormwater ordinance in compliance with T D E C requirements, so pretty much it's a state mandate.
Hear motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
Yes.
Councilman Harold?
Yes.
Councilman Staley?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Thayer?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes, ordinance number six fifty, six fifty-seven passes on first reading. Second and final reading, ordinance number six fifty-four, amending title in chapter one of the Clinton Municipal Code, intoxicating liquors. Hear motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second.
This, once again, is the package liquor store that passed on referendum in November. It will allow them in B two and B four zones, which B two is, once again, primarily Clinch Avenue and Seivers Boulevard, a little bit of North Main Street down towards.
Interstate?
McDonald's down that way, I guess, at Seivers Boulevard, too, but then B four is the interstate zone, so pretty much Seivers Boulevard, Clinch Avenue, the interstate.
Does anyone come, came by to pick up an application or inquire?
We've had several, well, several, we've had some inquire. The applications, per the ordinance, will be ready next Monday, February the first, to pick up.
And remind us, Roger, there's no limitation of how many can be put in?
Correct.
Just going, the supply and demand.
Supply and, now, state law does dictate that one individual or one firm can only do two.
Okay, but there's two.
And once again, the the application from us is just pretty much a pass-through process, the final, everything is really regulated by the state. Somebody applies with us, and we don't act within sixty days, pretty much they can just go around us anyway, so it's just kind of formality, dealing with the city on it, but we can control it by zoning.
Any other questions?
How many does the city of Oak Ridge have, Roger?
I think three.
Three? For a town that size?
Yes.
How much sales tax, are there rumors to that, or how much they bring in a year?
Last year, we checked, and last year, they did three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars in revenue for the city of Oak Ridge.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
Yes.
Councilman Harold?
Yes.
Councilman Staley?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Thayer?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes, ordinance number six fifty-four passes on second, final reading. Under resolutions, resolution number eight oh eight, this is the E D A grant application for the water system improvements.
This is a C U B project. It's for a waterline extension to the I seventy-five industrial park.
And this is gonna be something they're applying for?
We have to apply for it for them, yeah, they have to come through the city, yes.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Scott, we're gonna be done in about five minutes. Now, go ahead. Little pause for you, go ahead. Duck under the camera.
See you, Scott. Scott slipped the roof.
He can't, he can't stand anymore. He's got, he's got that oddity in hand, he's, he's got the back of popcorn. It's gonna be a party night, party night on earth.
Bopping some popcorn.
I lost my place. Where are we?
Redwood, roll call.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please. You already did roll call?
No.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
Yes.
Councilman Harold?
Yeah.
Councilman Staley?
Yeah.
Yes.
Councilman Thayer?
Yes.[1613.84]